Go ahead and start in maybe about 10 seconds. And we can go ahead and start, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call to order the budget workshop of May 21st, 2020. Okay, as a reminder, due to the ongoing emergency, the workshop will be conducted virtually. I will now lead the flag salute. Please stand. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty. Madam City Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Nigar?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwank?
I'm here.
And Mayor Stewart?
Here. All right, so can we go on to public comments? Do we have any?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any public comments on non-agenda items.
Okay, perfect. So let's go ahead and go to item number one. Review the budget. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I will disclose early and upfront, the operating budget is balanced. The community service budget is balanced. The capital improvement program remains aggressive and with adjustments. I will also disclose that through the very diligent work of Jennifer and her budget team, we will also be sharing how we managed to balance out the next 60 months, albeit making many, many assumptions on our revenue projections. So now you know how the story ends, and it's important for us to share what transpired between January and today, May 21, 2020. It is also very important for us to share the economic devastation that occurred in four months and is projected to continue into the next fiscal year. Nobody is immune to the fiscal impacts of such a crisis. In January, we set out creating a very healthy budget. It was aggressive again by Temecula standards, expecting moderate growth in varied revenue sources, but truly built upon our fiscal year 1920 budget and health and growth of our local and our national economy. This all changed in mid-March as the world began to report the devastation of COVID-19. The United States of America began incrementally shutting down at varied levels. Declarations of emergency were signed by the World Health Organization, the White House, the California Governor, the Riverside County Board of Supervisors, and then by myself, and ratified by the Temecula City Council on March 24th. We had officially entered into a global pandemic environment with no known end date, no instructions on how to navigate, and an unknown fiscal impact as economies were shutting down. These had become unprecedented times and uncharted waters. The weathering of this storm for our city has been built on 30 years of very intentional and wise fiscal investments. Prudent restraint, fiscally conservative and responsible planning. I will get into more of these examples later in our agenda. But this morning's presentation will take a slightly different form, given the unconventional nature of having to conduct business virtually through a Zoom platform. Jennifer, Pat, and myself will be covering the entirety of the presentation and speaking to the slides. However, every valued member of the executive team has joined this meeting, and we will be available for any technical explanations or clarity on, at the back end for the city council. So as with previous budget presentations, we would like to propose that we be allowed to run through the program and slides in their entirety, and then pause on the backend for discussion and question and answers. We believe many of the questions may be answered or clarified when the whole budget picture is explained surrounding the annual operating budget, capital improvement budget, the Temecula Community Service District budget, and our five-year. So at this time, Jennifer will now share the workshop agenda for this morning.
Aaron, we're having a little bit of technical difficulty with the slideshow, so we'll be back in one second.
Okay.
It looks beautiful.
Okay, here we go. Good morning, Mayor and city council members. In addition to the fiscal impacts of the pandemic, today's presentation will provide an in-depth explanation of the economic and financial assumptions used to project the city's various revenue sources. As Aaron mentioned, he will spend some time reflecting on the city's strong fiscal foundation and how our 30 years of prudent fiscal management have prepared us to withstand this unprecedented economic impact. I will then summarize the budget projections for the general fund, Measure S, and TCSD funds. We will also review the proposed staffing levels, and Pat Thomas will provide an update on the city's capital improvement program. Finally, Aaron will introduce a few new business assistance programs for the council consideration to provide much-needed, immediate fiscal relief to eligible local businesses. On March 24th, 2020, the council approved the city's declaration of emergency in response to California State Governor's executive order requiring a statewide stay-at-home order in an attempt to slow the spread of the COVID-19 coronavirus. The city was quick to respond to this order, activating our emergency operations center and developing a strategic response to the emergency. The initial response focused on three primary objectives: public information, organizational continuity of governmental services, and recovery, which includes the federal and state relief stimulus legislation. Subsequently, we added the fourth objective, which is focused on financial solvency and COVID reimbursement. Today, we'll focus on this fourth prong of the city's strategic response as we walk you through the proposed budget and capital improvement program. As news of the statewide shutdown was announced, we immediately began assessing the impact to the local economy and the various city revenue sources. Several major sources were significantly impacted by the business closures and stay-at-home orders, with sales tax and Measure S being hit the hardest. The city's total operating revenues, including general fund, Measure S, and TCSD revenue totals $110 million. Within a four-month period, the city will experience a 13% decline, or nearly $15 million in lost revenue. We are anticipating an additional $8.8 million decline next fiscal year as compared to our original or our pre-COVID budget projections. It's anticipated our revenue for the next five years will be roughly $5 million lower each year as compared to our preliminary budget forecast as the economy recovers slowly from the pandemic. As you may recall, in last year's budget presentation, we introduced a new fiscal sustainability model created to illustrate the potential impacts on the city's operating budget. This model was to serve as the foundation for developing fiscal contingency plans when needed. Little did we know then how soon the need would arise. The next few slides will illustrate the economic impact of the COVID pandemic and how the city has responded budgetarily. This first slide shows the city's operating fund balance prior to COVID using the assumptions in our preliminary budget. On the chart, the blue bars represent the combined fund balance of the general fund, TCSD, and Measure S fund. The black marks show the portion of the fund balance that is reserved for economic uncertainty and the secondary reserve designed to cover revenue shortfalls. The green line represents the amount of available fund balance over and above the reserves. And as you can see, we are balanced in all five years with a healthy level of available fund balance. Once the stay-at-home orders were implemented, staff began gathering information to quickly quantify the estimated loss in revenue. Absent any expenditure reductions, this chart shows the dramatic impact on the fund balance from the drop in revenue. The fund balance would not meet the desired 25% reserve this fiscal year and would go negative by year three of the five-year forecast. Again, this is before any budgetary reduction measures have been factored into the forecast. With the scope of the problem now identified, departments worked diligently to revamp their budget requests and reprioritize their operations. Multiple budget reduction measures were put into place, which offset the reduction in revenue and has balanced the operating funds in all five years of the forecast. Personnel reductions included the release of 137 part-time or seasonal employees, the majority of which were in TCSD. The deferral of filling three vacant positions and the deferral of adding new police officers in years two and three of the five-year plan to keep pace with growth and population. Operating expenditure reductions included a 7% reduction in non-safety departments for 2021, including the elimination of all departmental training budgets and the deferral of all capital outlay purchases, including the replacement of vehicles, equipment, and technology. Deferral of asset management contributions and capital improvement project expenditures will also help balance the five-year, and will be revisited throughout the year as the economy begins to recover. This slide illustrates the budgetary reductions are factored into each year of the five-year forecast. With nearly $15 million lost in revenue in just the last four months of the fiscal year, there is not adequate time in this fiscal year to reduce operating budgets in a like amount. The fiscal year 1920's operating budget reductions total 6.3 million, with fiscal year 2021 reductions totaling 12.5 million. You can see in the last row that over the next couple of years, it will be necessary to utilize a small portion of the $3.9 million secondary reserve to balance the general fund. However, it's important to note, at this point, we will not need to dip into the reserve for economic uncertainty. The nature of budgeting is heavily reliant on assumptions. However, this particular budget in this unprecedented economy has been even more challenging and is largely built on many unknown factors. Upon the outset of the stay-at-home orders, staff immediately reached out to our local business community, the Chamber of Commerce, Visit Temecula Valley, and our revenue consultants to quantify the loss in revenue. It will still be several months until we receive actual results of the stay-at-home orders' impact on sales tax due to the lag time in the state's reporting. TOT receipts are more timely, however, we've received several inquiries for TOT relief, and some hotels have simply not remitted their TOT payments. With 57% of our total operating revenues coming from sales tax and Measure S, we spent a great deal of time analyzing the impacts of the pandemic on each business sector. Our sales tax consultant, HDL Companies, also provided their budget projections, which ironically came within $5,000 of our internal projections for 1920 and within 1.2% of our projections for 2021. According to our local auto dealerships, sales activity has come to a halt during, right after the stay-at-home orders. While their service departments remain open, we only receive sales tax on the sale of parts, not on services provided. The business and industry sector within Temecula is primarily driven by medical supply sales, so this sector should remain strong. And it's expected that online sales will rise dramatically during this pandemic, so the county pool allocations, which is where online sales are categorized, are anticipated to increase. Projections for sales tax for next fiscal year also show reductions in the first three quarters compared to the pre-COVID data, with recovery expected in Q2 of 2021. However, with the unprecedented unemployment levels and the fear-induced nature of this crisis, we project consumer behavior to rebound much slower than originally thought, causing a prolonged recovery. This slide shows a graphical illustration of our sales tax projections. Sales tax is seasonal and has its peaks and valleys throughout the year. However, you can see the overall magnitude of the COVID reduction and the anticipated recovery. With sales tax declining by 10% this fiscal year and 12% in fiscal year 2021 compared to the pre-COVID projections, the city's general fund operations will need to be adjusted significantly to offset a loss in revenue of this magnitude. Assumptions on TOT revenue are aligned with projections of Visit Temecula Valley and are based on the occupancy levels we are experiencing. Mentioned previously, several hotels have either requested TOT relief or have not remitted their taxes. For fiscal year 1920, we are projecting a 19% reduction in TOT as compared to the prior year. Property tax revenue is less impacted than other revenue sources due to the timing of when the county assesses property values, which occurred prior to the COVID pandemic. Property transfer tax and supplemental taxes, which occur when home sales are remodeled or sold, will likely be impacted if home prices fall in response to the pandemic. However, as a city that participates in the TEATER Plan, we are paid based on the assessment as opposed to when property tax bills are paid. The county keeps all the interest and penalties that are accrued on late payments, but the city is made whole. Future property tax revenue may decline as property values drop, so we've reduced our long-term projected growth rate for property tax from 3% per year down to 1%. Reductions are also expected in the transportation-related revenue sources. Gas tax and RMRA are both tied to the volume of sales, so with less drivers on the road, sales in gasoline and diesel have plummeted. The anticipated declines are preliminary estimates provided by the state, which will be revised as time goes on. Measure A is a one-cent sales tax imposed by RCTC and dedicated to transportation improvements and will be impacted in the same way as the city's Measure S sales tax. Across these three sources, a loss of nearly $2 million is anticipated, which directly impacts our road maintenance budget in the coming years. I'd like to now turn the presentation back over to City Manager Aaron Adams, who will discuss the city's fiscal foundation.
Thank you, Jen. As I mentioned in my introduction, our city has been built on 30 years of very intentional and wise fiscal investments, prudent restraint, fiscally conservative and responsible planning. I want to emphasize that while the revenue impacts Jennifer shared are significant to our local economy and the city revenue, they are not devastating to the city's budget due to the multiple fiscal decisions and policies that you've approved over the city's history. Through strong fiscal leadership, we've had a lean and motivated organization since the Great Recession. We've controlled our spending. We've kept our debt ratio low, and we have established several separate funds that can provide resources if needed. By and large, the most significant factor in our ability to absorb the anticipated economic impacts is the council and our community's support in passing Measure S back in November 2016. This revenue source has not only provided the city with increased public safety staffing, numerous capital improvement projects, and the ability to establish asset replacement funds, it now provides the necessary safety net to allow the city to maintain its public safety service levels. A variety of funding sources and reserves are available to absorb the impact of the pandemic and the significant loss of revenue. Measure S is considered unrestricted and will be heavily relied upon to balance the general fund and TCSD operations. Available fund balance is also unrestricted, and this was fully utilized to offset the drop in general fund revenue and the balance of the fund. Our reserve funds, as mentioned earlier, we do plan to utilize a very small portion of our secondary reserves to balance fiscal year 2021 and 2122. However, the reserve for economic uncertainty will remain fully funded for the time being. The city has several replacement funds established for fleet, facilities, technology, and street maintenance. These funds are dedicated to future asset replacement per the budget policy, but can be redirected and utilized for other purposes with city council approval if need be. We also have funds set aside that are restricted for specific uses. It is notable... Excuse me. It is notable to mention these funds will remain intact despite the budgetary constraints that we're facing. The city established an irrevocable pension trust two years ago. These funds are restricted for pension payments to CalPERS. While the balance in the trust fluctuates with the market, the current balance is roughly $11.5 million, which is enough to cover nearly three years' worth of pension obligation payments. The city is also self-insured for workers' compensation and carries a reserve of $1.8 million dedicated to potential workers' compensation claims. And finally, we continue to preserve the funding for our retiree medical benefit, and we hold these funds in an irrevocable trust, which currently has a balance of $11.6 million. At this time, I will now turn the presentation back over to our Director of Finance, who will share the highlights of the fiscal year 2021 proposed operating budget.
Thanks, Aaron. With the COVID impact affecting revenue so late in the fiscal year, there was not adequate time to reduce expenditures enough to offset this loss in revenue. So expenditures will outpace revenue for fiscal year 1920 by $4.5 million. By fiscal year 2021, the decline in net revenue will be much lower, reducing the dependence on fund balance to cover the shortfall in revenue. Contributions or transfers to other funds include payments for capital projects, debt service for the Civic Center and Margarita Recreation Center facilities, and the previous contribution to the pension trust. The fiscal year 1920 ending fund balance is expected to be $23.1 million, of which $19.3 million is reserved and another $356,000 is committed to provide the Pachanga-funded police officer. An undesignated fund balance of $3.4 million is quickly exhausted in fiscal year 2021 as it's necessary to balance the general fund. This chart is designed to illustrate the different fund balance components mentioned throughout this presentation. And in looking at the bottom of the slide, you can see the total fund balance for each year. This fund balance is made up of the components displayed above. The first layer is the portion committed to future capital projects and the Pachanga-funded police officer. The next layer is the reserve for economic uncertainty, which represents 20% of the operating expenditures. Then the next portion is for the secondary reserve, which represents 5% of operating expenditures. And finally, the green section is the undesignated or available fund balance. These funds are unrestricted and can be used for one-time expenditures. You can see how quickly these funds are exhausted as they are utilized to balance the general fund. Graphically, this chart shows the dip in revenues expected in fiscal year 1920 and the gradual recovery over the next five years. Revenues are projected to begin ramping up slowly in late 2020 with faster growth anticipated for 2122 as the economy hopefully returns to normal. This chart shows the dramatic $10.6 million decline in fund balance in fiscal year 1920, with a further decline of $3.4 million in fiscal year 2021. Desired reserve levels are anticipated to be achieved in fiscal year 2122 as the fund balance begins to increase again. Measure S is the voter-approved one-cent sales tax added in 2017, and it is also significantly impacted by the COVID stay-at-home orders. A reduction in fiscal year 1920 revenue of over $5 million is anticipated, causing the need to re-prioritize the appropriation of Measure S funds. With the preservation of public safety services, which is the top priority of the council and the cornerstone behind the approval of Measure S, a larger portion of Measure S funds will be needed to transfer to the general fund to support public safety. Additionally, TCSD's reliance on Measure S is also increasing, leaving less funds available for asset management and for capital improvement projects. This slide illustrates the shift in Measure S appropriations as a result of the COVID impact. In fiscal year 1920, prior to COVID impact, a total of 19% of Measure S was a portion to fund public safety services, with another 10% towards asset management, 42% to general services, and the remaining 29% to fund capital improvement projects. In fiscal year 2021, as represented on the chart on the right, the proportion allocated towards public safety doubles to 38%, with asset management decreasing to only 2% and CIP decreased to 21%. Over the ensuing five years, you can see how Measure S is expected to rebound, and as fund balance begins to replenish, it will be programmed to fund future CIP projects that were shifted out due to the lack of funding and the shift towards public safety services. As general fund revenues grow, the reliance on Measure S funds will decrease. Shifting gears, we'll now focus on the TCSD budget. And upon the issuance of the stay-at-home orders, TCSD shuttered their facilities and canceled their events and programs. The expected loss of revenue from these operations is roughly $824,000 for the period of just March to June. The subsequent release of project, part-time, and seasonal employees is expected to save $364,000 plus an additional $300,000 in savings for the non-personnel-related expenditures related to the canceled TCSD operations. With the loss of revenue larger than the anticipated savings, additional Measure S funds are necessary to balance the TCSD fund and to provide for a higher fund balance in subsequent year. When building the 2021 TCSD budget, a major assumption had been made as to when TCSD would resume their operations. For budgeting purposes, we assume TCSD operations would be opened in a phased approach beginning in July. If the stay-at-home orders extend beyond July 1st, we will bring forward budget adjustments necessary to remain balanced. Typically, we transfer enough Measure S to provide a fund balance of $100,000 in TCSD, but for 2021, we have nearly $400,000 to cover any contingencies. This fund balance should be enough to absorb two to three months of sustained closures in the event the operations phase in slower than anticipated. Over the next five years, TCSD's fund balance should be adequate to guard against fluctuations in revenues and expenditures as facilities open and events and programs come back online. Similar to the general fund, as TCSD revenues return, the reliance on Measure S funds will decrease. I'll now turn the presentation back over to Aaron to discuss staffing levels.
Thank you, Jennifer. As shown earlier, citywide personnel costs are decreasing in response to the pandemic. Authorized staffing levels were reduced by 3.5 full-time positions due to the freezing of vacant positions. And in accordance with our memorandum of understanding, a total of 26 current positions were evaluated by an outside third party, and the majority are recommended for reclassifications effective July 1st, the cost of which we've included in the departmental budgets. Public safety staffing levels have remained the same as the prior year. The contract with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department expires June 30th, and we may want to consider a one-year extension to allow us adequate time to review the various operational efficiencies being discussed with the Riverside County Sheriff's research team. We will continue to provide four firefighters per engine. We will meet the one officer per thousand police officer-to-population ratio. And this chart illustrates the authorized headcount over the past 15 years. You can see that the peak headcount was nearly 211 positions in 2007, 2008. Then it was reduced after the Great Recession. Authorized positions today still remain 37.8 positions below those '07-'08 levels. At this time, I'd like to introduce the city's Director of Public Works and City Engineer, Pat Thomas, who will share the highlights of the fiscal year 21. who will share the highlights of the fiscal year twenty one, twenty-five capital improvement program. Pat?
Thank you, Erin, and good morning, everyone. As Erin mentioned, I'll be providing an overview of the capital improvement program or CIP budget for fiscal years two thousand twenty, twenty-one through twenty-four, twenty-five. As you know, we budget for capital projects on a five-year basis. The total cost of projects included in the five-year program is over six hundred and twenty-three million dollars. As you can see, we still have a very robust CIP program. Of that amount, five hundred and fourteen million is funded in the five-year program, and approximately a hundred and nine million is unspecified and funding has not been identified yet for that amount. We have deferred and re-prioritized several projects in order to adjust for the loss of revenue due to the COVID emergency. For example, the Inez Road widening project, we have funding available to continue with the environmental impact report. However, the funds for construction have been deferred for at least a few years. We've added six new projects to the program for this coming year. Those include widening of Overland Drive between Jefferson Avenue and Commerce Center Drive. This project is associated with the Overland Drive Bridge over Marietta Creek Project and will be constructed sometime in a future year in accordance with the bridge project. An ADA compliance project is added for ADA improvements in the West Side Business Park area to be done in advance of a pavement rehabilitation project for that area, and that project will be funded using CDBG funds. We've added a mini pump track project due to the success of the pump track at Ronald Reagan Sports Park. The mini pump track will be geared towards younger age children and will be moving forward with that this coming year. We've added a project to rehabilitate the Mary Phillips Senior Center. That project will be funded using newly available CDBG funds. We've also added a project to install perimeter fencing around Sam Hicks Monument Park, which will be will be done along with the installation of a new playground at that location. Also added is a project to provide funding for the Vine Creek Affordable Housing Project, sixty units located at Pujo and Main Street, and this will be funded using available SARTA funds. The circulation projects included in the program total over five hundred and six million dollars. Jennifer, thank you. So the circulation projects are total over five hundred and six million dollars. As you can see, the list of projects in the circulation category include the I-15 French Valley Parkway Phase Two project, of which we've secured a fifty million dollar infra grant, and we intend to move forward with construction on that project in two thousand twenty-one. Also, the I-15 Congestion Relief Project is to construct an auxiliary lane. This project will be led by the city, followed by additional auxiliary lanes constructed by Caltrans. Also, the pavement rehabilitation projects, we are moving forward with several pavement rehabilitation projects this year. However, in the in the coming years, as mentioned earlier, due to the reduced revenue, we will likely be reducing the number of pavement rehabilitation projects constructed. The numbers on the right side indicate the construction costs of these projects, and you'll see some numbers in future slides. We're looking at about a hundred and twenty-five million dollars in expenditures for construction over the next few years. We believe this will go towards stimulating the local economy. The infrastructure projects include forty projects totaling over seventy-four million dollars, highlighted by the new Margarita Recreation Center at Margarita Park. We're moving forward with plans for a design build project. We'll be soliciting bids for that project fairly soon, and we expect to begin construction in two thousand twenty-one. Also, we're moving forward with a project to construct a new bicycle trail facility, the Sangre Tudas Creek Pedestrian Bicycle Trail Extension, to extend that trail to the west from Inez Road connecting to Marietta Creek and other infrastructure projects as well. The parks and recreation projects included in the five-year program total over twenty-five million, and we've got sixteen projects in the program. The one of those projects is to add additional shade structures at the CRC Pool Complex to go along with the improvements in shade structures that were added last year. Also, we'll be completing the Community Services Master Plan this year, as well as replacing the control system at the Eagle Source Splash Pad. We've added four new playground projects to replace playgrounds at the parks listed, and these are primarily due to the fact that those playgrounds need upgrades regarding ADA access and safety improvements at that location. The SARTA projects included in the in the five-year program, as I mentioned earlier, the Vine Creek Affordable Housing Project will be a hundred percent affordable and sixty units, and SARTA funds will be used towards that project, as well as a placeholder for a future affordable housing project included in the program. And now I will turn it back over to Erin Adams to complete the presentation.
Thank you, Pat. I believe it's important to remind everyone of the resources that are available and the efforts that are underway for additional relief to assist our local businesses during these stay-at-home restrictions. The City of Temecula launched Revive. This is an online consolidated and very well organized list of business and individual recovery resources, and you can find that information at the website that's listed on the slide. The Temecula City Council also approved the Community Recovery and Reopening Plan and Advocacy Letter on May fifth. This was a coordinated effort with the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce, Visit Temecula Valley, Temecula Valley Hospital, and many other stakeholders, and this was primarily designed to encourage Riverside County and the Governor's Office that the City of Temecula has thought through a responsible reopening and readiness plan. Phase three of the CARES Act, a federal EDA grant, we, the City of Temecula, are pursuing a competitive federal grant between two and three million dollars, and this would be used to assist Temecula business and with a tourism focus slant. And Riverside County Business Assistant Program was recently launched. They are setting aside fifty million dollars that will become available, and program grants will be administered through the Business and Community Services. This was formerly known as Riverside County EDA. The City of Temecula businesses will be eligible. They will be encouraged. The criteria for this program will be finalized by the Board of Supervisors on June second, and city staff will be pouring through this program. So when it's completed, we will make sure our local business community is made aware and they're encouraged to apply. Old Town Restaurant Expanded Footprint and Street Closure Concept. This revolves around the provision of public streets or parking lots being afforded to restaurants for dining when they are permitted by the State of California to reopen. These expanded dining options likely would be in line with physical distancing and occupancy restrictions. Staff is still working through the details of this concept, but we hope to meet with the Designated City Council Subcommittee next week. I'm very proud to also announce that the city has proposed a new Business Sustainability Grant Program for the City Council Consideration. This would assist local businesses who have been impacted by the COVID pandemic. We have branded this effort Temecula Assist, or TA. This is a small business emergency relief grant for Temecula business owners that are coping with the financial effects of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. TA is a half a million dollar investment by the City Council to assist small business through two separate grant programs. The city will be the recipient of nearly three hundred and twenty-nine thousand in Community Development Block Grant CV funds as part of the federal stimulus package and has designed an assistance program for our business community. With the City Council's approval, we'd like to supplement CDBG funds with discretionary general fund dollars, essentially creating two distinct pots of money so that more businesses can take advantage of this program. By doing so, these two grant programs may be allowed to have varied levels of restrictions, given the legal requirements of CDBG dollars and greater flexibility of uses with general fund dollars. Again, this would be a five hundred thousand dollar grant program tailored for small business. CDBG grants would be offered up to ten thousand dollars for eligible businesses. The eligibility criteria will be outlined in greater detail in the application process, but will need to follow federal CDBG guidelines. This potentially would benefit thirty-three small businesses. We are calling this the Rent Recovery and Job Retention Track. Ten thousand dollars max grant per business. The funds could be used for rent, mortgage, payroll. It focuses on a percentage of low and moderate income jobs, has a two-year monitoring period, and the program is funded with three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars of federal dollars, Community Development Block Grant, and a thousand dollars in general fund dollars. General Fund Grants, the second pot, we are calling the Business Improvement Grants, would be offered up to five thousand dollars for eligible businesses. This would assist an additional thirty-four small businesses. Five thousand dollar max grant per business. The funds could be used to retool or update a business to coincide with the new health-related requirements. Examples may include expanding outdoor patios, assistance with permit fees, improving e-commerce capabilities, installing sneeze guards or Plexiglas that's required by the State of California. The program would be funded with a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of city's general fund money. It would have a six-month monitoring period. So for half a million dollars, we could potentially assist sixty-seven small businesses immediately with grants, not loans, for COVID-related hardships. In both grant programs, we would propose that businesses will be required to complete the requisite application, and they would be selected through a lottery system. With the City Council's tacit approval today and recognizing that time is of the essence, staff is ready to launch this program next Tuesday morning, following the holiday weekend, and begin providing the much-needed assistance to our local business community. Well, as expected, this year's budget presentation is very different than business as usual. And as we continue to monitor the effects of the pandemic, I am very proud to be able to present to you today a balanced budget over the five-year forecast. As Pat described, our CIP is healthy and will continue to provide the needed capital improvement projects within our city. Across the eighty-three separate projects with an estimated six hundred and twenty-three million dollars in project costs, of which we've secured funding of five hundred and fourteen million, it is important for me to mention that eighty-five percent of these funds are restricted for use on capital projects, meaning these funds cannot be used to balance the general fund or provide funding for police and fire services. Additionally, with the robust CIP, it is anticipated that roughly a hundred and twenty-five million in construction and design work will be infused into our local economy over the next twenty-four months. This will be providing fuel for our local economic engine. I think it's fair to assume that for every one million dollars the city invests in construction contracts, it may generate between ten and fifteen direct jobs, and depending on the nature of the trade, an additional indirect jobs anywhere from ten to twenty more. I would be remiss if I did not publicly express my thanks to Jennifer Hennessy, Tricia Hawk, Tina Rivera, Rudy Graciano, and Greg Butler for their tireless work on preparing these budgets and countless hours of work coordinating with departments to make the necessary adjustments since January. And finally, with the ever-changing environment that we are now in, I believe it is prudent to continue to monitor the budgetary impacts caused by the pandemic and bring back any budget revisions that may be necessary later in the year. We do plan to present a budget revised to the City Council in October, as we will have several months of data by then, and will hopefully provide an encouraging update on our operating and capital budgets. Looking forward, each day seems to bring glimmers of hope as our state and county move further into reopening phases and orders become more relaxed. Personally, I want to wish continued good health and blessings to the City Council, our employees, and our residents and businesses. This concludes our presentation this morning. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, and your staff's available for any questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Erin and Jennifer, and the entire staff that put this together. It's pretty amazing that, you know, even in good times, balancing the budget is is a challenge, but in these times, it's even a bigger challenge. So the fact that you guys were able to do it, totally incredible. So thank you again for all the hard work you guys put into this. Okay, so Mayor Protem, do you have any questions of staff?
Yes, I have two. Will the grant fund salaries for employees?
Payroll.
Payroll? Will it fund payroll? Okay. And the second question was lottery system works. We pre-qualify the applications to make sure they qualify and that they're appropriate and then that they're filled out properly, and then of the applications that have been qualified, it's just a random drawing, pretty much?
Actually, I think the, we talked about it yesterday as a staff, and I have Lynn on the line, and Luke, of course, is on the line, and they can jump in if I'm.
Just curious.
But for the lottery selection, what our CDBG consultant has advised us and others have is that we would, everyone that applies would go into the lottery. We would not give qualifications, and as the lottery is drawn, we would then at that point audit the application for consistency with the guidelines. And Luke and Lynn, please correct me if I'm mistaken.
That is correct.
On process.
That's all right. So we would audit it over the course of the next several days, and then, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't announce who received the grants and then have to backtrack and say, oh, you got it, but we.
No, no. We determine after the lottery, an individual or a business is selected, we would make sure that they meet the requirements of the grant, whether it was a general fund grant or whether it was a CDBG grant. We would make sure that those are met before notifying anyone, let alone the person that applied.
Actually, I see, and that is better than going through every single application, you know, in the beginning, and two-thirds of those aren't going to be funded because there's not enough money to go around. So, yeah, that's that's smart. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Right, Councilmember Nigar.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions. Pat, thank you for an excellent update on on CIP. I may have missed it, but as it relates to the widening of Inez Road, what's what's the plan? I know that there was a lot of concern from Los Rancitos residents, and and then we started to kick around the need to do an environmental impact report. Let's talk a little bit about that, and if you could tell us what what you think the timing may be so we can inform those residents when to be engaged.
Oh, we do, we did retain funding in the in the budget, in the program, to prepare that environmental impact report, and we are moving forward with our consultant on that. We expect that that's going to take at least twelve months to complete, and there will be an opportunity for public comment on that document when it's available. So that's that's sometime, I would say, in two thousand twenty-one is when we'll be taking public comment and responding to those comments on that environmental document. As far as the construction goes, we've deferred the funding for the construction. I don't have a specific year for you for that funding for construction. That's something that, as Erin mentioned, as we go forward and evaluate how things are shaping up in the future, that's when we would be able to to identify when we would potentially have funding for construction.
So to drill down a little further, when do you think that there'll be a scoping meeting for the notice of preparation for the EIR? Because I know that's when everybody will want to jump in. When do you, and again, I'm not pinning you down, just sort of in general, do we see that happening in nine months, a year? What do you think?
Well, as far as the the start of preparation, that that's something that will happen fairly soon. So I would say if we were to be doing a scoping on that EIR document, that's probably something in the next three or four months, I would say. But then it will take time to prepare all the technical studies and to put the draft document together. That's something that'll be, say, mid-two thousand twenty-one, when that'll be put together as a draft and then put out for public comment.
Yeah, my last comment on this is that a lot of things were brought up by the residents that I want to make sure they have an opportunity to put in the scope so that we adequately get whatever we need to study their concerns. That's kind of where I'm. get whatever we need to study their concerns. That's kind of where I'm coming from. So, and Mr. City Manager, I want to stay, if possible, in very close contact with them so they know what's going on every step of the way. Is that a, I see the head nodding, Aaron.
Yes, sir.
Just to add one more comment, we did take note of all the comments that were made during the, the public comments at, at the last few meetings and pass that information along to the consultant. We're, we're, we're looking at the scope of work for preparation of that document. And we'd be happy to reach out to the HOA as far as the, the scope on that goes.
Okay, sounds real good on that. And then I have one other question regarding the grant program. First, compliments. I think, Aaron, that's a great way to go. And I think it's, it's gonna go a long way into helping some businesses stay alive. I want to get some feedback from staff and my colleagues on a, on a couple of things. Looking at what's already been tried on the federal level and the money we're investing and the max amount of ten thousand dollars, I, I, I have a little concern, but again, I want to get some opinions, that as soon as that money can be received by somebody, it can easily, quickly go into salary somewhere and disappear. Or it can easily and quickly go from, in the, into a business's account and turn right around and pay rent for one or two months. And, and the concern that I'm having is that we just may be a conduit for transference of money. When I think our goal is to try to get some sort of improvement on the ground that facilitates opening the business. So we know that on the federal level with the Payroll Protection Plan, that it was saddled with all kinds of rules and it looks like they're gonna, they're realizing that now and is gonna start to amend it. That it really didn't help. And for instance, same thing with our grant, another example is right now, many businesses, particularly restaurants, have laid off people. And we find that being laid off right now, while it's unfortunate, is providing more of a, of a revenue for the person being laid off than the Payroll Protection Plan would give them for coming back to work for two months. And so what I, and again, I support the, the program. I just wonder if it needs to be tweaked down a little bit. And by the way, I'm pledging my community service funds toward the, toward the program and I encourage my colleagues to do the same. But if we can tweak that a little bit or get some opinion of what everybody thinks regarding that.
Yeah, I, I'd love to hear from, from the balance of the council and, and Luke and Lynn as well. Like, as I was, I was mentioning, the CDBG portion of these federal funds has some non-negotiable criteria. And, and much like the block grants that we accept. And it's, it is restrictive. Not everyone is gonna want to go through the paperwork and that sort of thing or the oversight, but it is restricted with specific uses that are tailored to those federal dollars. So I don't believe there's a lot of room for maneuvering that criteria. On the other program that I mentioned, we certainly have far more flexibility because it's general fund dollars. So Luke, Lynn, do you want to expand upon that a little bit and then?
And actually, Mike, when we, when we first started, we only had one program. And we were, which included both the CDBG dollars and the city dollars. And we were applying the rules from the CDBG program to, to both pots of money. And we had the same thoughts that you did. That, hey, you know, the, the city dollars don't have nearly as much strings attached. So we need to open that up to, to, to other, other things that businesses may need to do in order to get open and not just pay rent and make payroll. And that is particularly to supplies, to PPE, to different things that, you know, capital investments need to go into the business itself to prepare themselves for opening up. So I, I think what you're mentioning is actually already built in to the, the city general fund dollar portion of this project. And it's not necessarily intended or encouraged to be for the same things that the CDBG program is, which is payroll and rent, which we're kind of stuck with based on the federal regulations.
Thank you, Luke.
And just to add to that, to what Luke said, we, we realize that the CDBG grants, as a lot of CDBG programs, it can be onerous for the business. So we try to structure it in a way that would be the least onerous. And by actually allowing payroll, mortgage, and rent, those are some of the easiest things to document and will probably require the least amount of burden for the businesses. And just as we do with our typical CDBG program, we will work with the businesses every step of the way to make sure that they comply with the, the onerous federal requirements that exist.
Thank you, Lynn. And Mr. Mayor, I'm seeing a ping pong ball in City Hall type of event conducted by you where the numbers are chosen, okay, of who wins the lottery. Anyway, thank you for answering my questions.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Ryan? Any questions?
No, no questions. I, we've, you know, had some pre-meetings with staff on all of this and you guys addressed all my questions earlier, so I'm good. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Schwenk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick question. Mr. City Manager, you mentioned in the presentation that the Old Town Revival Plan would go to subcommittee next week. After that, how quickly do you think we're able to pivot in and put that plan into action?
Yeah, you're referencing sort of this concept about restaurant expanded footprint?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, we'd like, we'd like to meet with the Old Town Steering Committee next week. Staff is, is drilling down now and has been for two weeks on what streets and circulation and public safety and parking. And this is, this is primarily being viewed for Old Town. And I would think that we can pivot fairly quick when the state of California greenlights restaurants for in-dining, that we're gonna try to be on top of that and ready to sort of be there to, to help facilitate a further expansion of, of reopening for, for Old Town restaurants. So I, I'd like to believe that we're gonna be prepared and, and ready to move pretty fast.
And we'll be ready when the state sort of allows in, in-house dining to, to move forward.
That, that would be our goal. Yeah.
Great, thank you. And that's the only question I have.
All right, thank you. I do have a question. So.
May I follow up on Zach's question?
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you. There's an interesting dynamic. If we end up implementing that, will we want to tear it down anytime soon when the restaurants are able to offer in-house dining? It's just an interesting concept, Zach. You and I can discuss it the subcommittee. But anyway, that's all my, my only comment.
No, just, just, just one thing on that, Councilman Nigar, is I think we haven't seen the criteria for in-house dining and how that's gonna, but everyone has their presumptions of what that's gonna look like. And it's likely, very likely, it's gonna look like you will not be allowed to have as many people seated in your restaurant as you did pre-COVID, right? And even then, your footprint is gonna shrink even further because you're gonna have to space out your tables and chairs and umbrellas. So the concept here is maybe for a period of time, we could lend our property or parking lots and things of that nature with permissions from the city to pick up those lost tables that they otherwise would lose that will be required by the state of California to reopen. So that's.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so I have a question on the loan program also. So are we going to be like grading these or are we going to, like, for instance, I got a PPP loan and I know a lot of people did get a PPP loan. So are they going to be the ones who got that? Are they gonna still be available to get this loan versus a business that doesn't get the loan? You see what I'm saying? I mean, I would like to be able to rate these businesses on, on need.
Yeah, we're, we're not, we're not recommending that we rate these applications. We, this would be a lottery system. We would expect it'll go very, very quick. And I like the idea of you choosing, Mr. Mayor, the ping pong balls, so we might facilitate that. But we did discuss internally when we were putting this together and, and looking at best practices that have been used elsewhere. And, and just to clarify too, this is not a loan. These, these are, both of these programs are grants. You know, there's no requirement to repay it back. That's why it's, it's more attractive probably if you meet the criteria. But we, as we written the criteria drafted today, we're not gonna penalize someone that has received federal or state assistance. And, and they would still be eligible for our grant. Does that, that answers your question? And Luke and Lynn, again, please confirm.
That is correct. If you receive federal funding, you are not disqualified or ineligible for this grant. One thing that we must be aware of is duplication of benefits. So if someone received a PPP from the federal government, they can still get our grant. They just cannot use it for the same exact thing that they use PPP for.
And that's where the review from staff's perspective and our CDBG, if it's CDBG, would come into play, correct?
Correct.
All right. All right, thank you. That was the only question I have. So Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We only have two public comments and I'll go ahead and read those into the record. Both of them actually have to do with the Inez widening. The first is from Lee Rosu. I understand this is a budget meeting. With that in mind, I wanted to encourage you to find better use for the money currently budgeted to convert Inez Road into a freeway bypass. The main cause for the traffic issue on Inez is the failure of the I-15 at Winchester. A better use of the Inez widening budget would be to work with Caltrans to speed up the improvement of the I-15 at Winchester. Nowadays, when every agency is struggling to find ways to save money while improving or at least maintaining the quality of service, we shouldn't use the city funds to lower the quality of life of city residents. Please reconsider the scope of the currently allocated budget for the Inez widening to better serve our community and city. The second public comment also is related to Inez widening and it's from Habib Isaac. I am a property owner in Los Ranchitos, which has a primary zone designation of residential low density and our CCNRs limit subdivisions to be no less than two acre lots to maintain our low, low residential density community. I am opposed to the widening of Inez Road as it will only increase existing concerns and traffic issues to the Los Ranchitos residents. There has a, there has been a number of collisions due to excessive vehicular trips, excessive speeds, and marginal visibility for our residents to access our residential properties for ingress and egress. It has been common practice for the city council to assist with mitigating traffic concerns voiced by residents regarding their neighborhoods. I have two examples of this that provide a fair comparison to the issue at hand with the proposed Inez widening. In two thousand seventeen, Caia Pina Colada Road that connects La Cerna Way to Meadow View, which is very similar development as Los Ranchitos, a traffic analysis was conducted due to concerns expressed by property owners and residents regarding the excessive use of the street as it relates to excessive cut-through traffic, excessive vehicular speeds, excessive commercial vehicle trips, school-related cut-throughs and stop sign violations. Similar to Caia Pina Colada, all of these concerns are similarly represented by the Los Ranchitos homeowners and residents. The city took measures to implement traffic calming. These measures included greater speed enforcement by Temecula Police, time restrictions for street access, and turn restrictions for accessing Caia Pina Colada. All these measures were implemented to reduce traffic trips and limit the street from being used as an arterial-type function. We too are requesting similar solutions to maintain the primary intent of Inez Road in providing residential access and not general ingress, ingress and egress that is more suitable for arterial streets such as Temecula Parkway. In two thousand nineteen, Bell Ranch Parkway also received city council approval for implementing a traffic calming plan to mitigate excessive vehicular speeds and visibility constraints that were concerns conveyed to the city by residents. The recommendations included reducing the speed limit and reducing traffic circulation by limiting access to one lane as a part of a road diet. City council approved these recommendations in August two thousand nineteen for Bell Ranch Parkway, which is located off of Temecula Parkway at a distance from Temecula Parkway similar to Inez Road from Temecula Parkway. The approved changes would improve site distance, allowing existing drivers to gauge speed of approaching vehicles more accurately with one lane, reduce overall speeds, eliminate excessive speeds generated by vehicular passing, reduce the number of traffic lanes pedestrians are required to cross, and mitigate potential collisions. Again, these are all similar concerns shared by the Los Ranchitos residents regarding the widening of Inez Road. The potential Inez Road widening would actually increase the exact impacts that the city council approved to mitigate for Bell Ranch Parkway. We currently already deal with visibility issues from our residents at current excess speeds. I have seen collisions and have been part of a fender bender. I think that's what he said, trying to say, while trying to turn into my residence. I use my turnal, my turn signal indicator well before two hundred feet away from my property and still always look in my rearview mirror, hoping that the traffic behind me realized that I need to slow down to access my residential property. The current vehicular traffic has no regard for our residential access and I have been subject to countless horns behind my vehicle as I slow down to access my residential property. Widening Inez Road will only promote this behavior and generate aggressive passing with two lanes as Los Ranchitos residents access to and from their properties. This is an unnecessary improvement that Los Ranchitos residents do want, do not want or require. Funds would be better spent to improve Temecula Parkway and the I-125, I think he means I-15 interchange. As growth occurs, traffic impact fees should be sufficiently updated to ensure traffic fee recovery can fund the required improvements to accommodate growth and the incremental demand placed on the city. Doing so would fall in line with the growth pays for growth instead of a Band-Aid fixed to an apparent regional improvement requiring coordination with Caltrans, new development, and the use of impact fees. Los Ranchitos HOA Board has worked in concert with the city on many issues and development transactions. We ask that you maintain our historical community intact, reflecting a low residential density community. And that concludes public comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so let's go on to general comments for my colleagues now. So Mayor Protem Edwards, are you there? I don't see her. Oh, there you are.
And I just want to say fabulous job staff in record time. And the fact that you seem, seem to think we could get the loans up and running as soon as next week or the week after, that's amazing. So, you know, on behalf of everyone who really needs those loans, thank you. And just an amazing job again. We will get through this. We will get through this and we'll be stronger when we're done.
And remember, these aren't loans, these are grants.
Grants, right, grants.
You can just pay your bills with. All right, Councilmember Nigar.
Yeah, just real quickly, you know, we're able to survive this because we always anticipated something. Some sort of catastrophe. We could not have anticipated a virus, but it's good we put funds away. And as Mary Ann said, we, we financially will make it through it with very little bumps and hiccups as it comes to running the city, even though it's very difficult. So good job to everybody, including my colleagues.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan?
Yeah, no, no real comments. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. One is, you know, first, the, the investment the city's gonna continue making in Public Works and CIP certainly helps with jobs creation and boosts the local economy. Cause we're, you know, definitely gonna be working with outside contractors and things on that. So the more we can, we can do on that end, I think the better locally is for us. So I was glad to see a lot of that maintained. I was also really excited to see the, our ability to maintain staffing levels for both police and fire. I think that's, you know, obviously, it's always been a, a key issue of mine. But, you know, I think that's, that's good for our community to be able to see. And, you know, I just wanted to pause for a minute and just hearken back to the days of Measure S. That was a bit of a divisive tax measure for our community. But just wanted to mention, you know, absent that and what we've seen with all the state, you know, takeaways and, and, you know, reductions in federal support and all that over the past years. I can only imagine, you know, and Jen, I'm not gonna ask you to model, you know, our financial situation without Measure S. But I can only imagine what that would look like today. And Temecula would be in a starkly different position. So whether or not, you know, folks supported it, I think, you know, in the long run, you know, it's, it's been a, a major benefit to the continuity of our, our service in this community. And then I also wanted to, you know, Ms. Hennessy, thank you for all the work you've done on this and, and, and your team. You know, the last time we all got together. Um, you know, the last time we all got together on uh, you know, budget hearings, you had modeled some projections and I remember taking a pause during that meeting just to highlight the fact that you had, you know, done some sort of sensitivity analysis, I think is what you called it. Um, and uh, related to potential downturns in the economy. Um, now certainly your model never accounted for this and this was way beyond anything uh, we expected, but I remember asking you at the time, you know, we should, we should contemplate, uh, you know, modeling worst-case scenarios and, you know, something more severe. And I, and I think your, your uh, foresight into all of this and, and, you know, your dedication to keeping the, the city fiscally solvent um, has, has really done us a, a, a huge, a huge, you know, benefit for, for our community. And so, you know, that is unusual for finance directors to take the kind of leadership you've had. Um, and I just wanted to thank you for that. Um, and then uh, uh, just, you know, also to the, the city manager and, and, you know, finance director and all those, you know, colleagues of mine who you know, over, over the years since I've been involved with the council, we've made very conservative decisions, uh, prepaying uh, debt, uh, setting up funds, uh, reserves and, and other uh, opportunities. Um, you know, again, that, that has allowed us to be in a very different fiscal position than a lot of our cities in Riverside County or Southern California. Um, and so, you know, we did it because it was the, the, the right thing to do and, and, you know, uh, in the long run was going to be a benefit for the city. We had no idea how beneficial it was actually going to be and here we are today. I think having a very different conversation had we not done all of those things over the last several years that, that have occurred. Um, so I just, you know, just from, from a council member and a, and a resident's perspective, this uh, this meeting is, is giving a lot more hope um, and confidence than uh, you know, than, than we would have had otherwise. So thank you all so much for uh, you know, all the hard work on this.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Schwenk.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. Uh, first of all, I'd just like to say thank you to Director Hennessy and the entire finance team. Obviously, uh, unprecedented times and, and everyone really stepped up and thanks to all the department heads and, and really city staff as a whole for, for coming together as a team and, and really putting together something uh, that's uh, that's, it's responsible and, and it's encouraging, to be honest with you. Um, coming into these uh, this budget season, I was uh, a little concerned uh, for our, our financial health, but knowing some of the decisions we've made in the past and, and will continue to make, um, really puts my uh, my mind at ease and I think the community as well. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm extremely encouraged by the ability for us to pivot. Uh, there's no playbook for this. But the, the team that we have put together and, and under council direction has really been able to pivot quite well and, and adapt to the changing environment. Uh, you know, especially related to the, the grant program that we're going to implement and and some of the, the uh, plans for uh, Old Town specifically. But just as a community, um, we're sort of writing this playbook and, and I think when this is all done, we'll be able to file it on the shelf and, and hand that down to, to future councils and future, future uh, city managers and finance directors and, and everyone else. So I, I'm just encouraged by this and, and I think uh, our community is as well. So just appreciative of all the hard work that's gone into this and, and we're able to uh, like everyone else has said, you know, we're in this together and we'll get out of this together and, and it looks like we're on a good uh, fiscal uh, foot right now. So I'm just really proud of the work that everyone's put into this and our community. So, thank you.
Awesome. Yeah, my comments echo all of yours. I mean, I'm incredibly proud of the staff for what they've done. And um, the creativeness that each department had to come up with to uh, make this budget balanced as they, as they did was incredible. So, thank you again, everybody who, you know, you guys are all putting in a lot of long hours and we, we all see it because we come in at certain times and you're still here. So um, thank you all for all you've done and thank you for another successful budget year despite COVID-19. So, thank you again. So any other comments before we, um, this is just a review item only without action. The actual budget will be adopted the first meeting in June. Um, so with that, I will adjourn this meeting until the meeting of May 26th. Everybody stay safe and healthy.